Pull the pot, the cat is somewhere eastward right now. Stuff like that.
This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and we are calling our regular town council meeting to order. It is currently seven PM on Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Wakefield.
Well, you kind of give me a head. Dear my Father, we want to thank you for this day, Lord, and thank you for our emergency service providers that are here today, Lord, and we're thankful for everything that they do and bring themselves out of their, out of their comfort zones to keep us safe, Lord. I pray a special blessing on all of them today. Give us wisdom as we go about the town's business and ask this in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance, except for Mr. Kertula, who is absent with notification. Ms. Murphy is on remotely. Next item up on the agenda is item five, adoption of minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes from the town council organizational meeting on December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three? And five B, the regular town council meeting, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the, on the agenda. Next item up is item six, presentations, proclamations, and declarations. And I do know we have quite a few members from local fire departments here. Rather than going over each proclamation, it's the same wording. Uh, we were gonna read it off and then we will present plaques individually. So this is to recognize everyone who was involved, all the departments who came out and helped. And this is an appreciation of your dedication, of your duties, and response to the fire at Blueville Mill on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, presented on this twelfth day of December. That's what I get for reading. Ninth day of January by the Killenly Town Council. I happen to open up to the first one and it actually has the wrong date on it. Alright. So at this time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, present plaques to each of the departments individually. First is the Ottawa and Fire Department. Next up is the Daveville Fire Department. Next is East, uh, we're gonna recognize the East Putnam Fire Department, they were unable to attend. Um, next up is East Killenly Fire Department. Next is the Williamsville Fire Engine Company. Next is the Putnam Fire Department. Next is the Danielson Fire Department. Next is the South Killenly Fire Department. Next, we will recognize the Wes Thompson Fire Department, and they were unable to attend this evening. We'll move on, next will be Community Fire Department. They were unable to attend as well. Um, next is the Woodstock Volunteer Fire Association Station Seventy-Six. Next, we will recognize Mort Lake Fire Company, who was unable to come this evening. East Brooklyn Fire Department was also unable to come this evening. And the Bunge Fire Brigade was unable to come this evening. So next will be the Plainfield Fire Company. And we'll move on to Mooseup Fire Department. Next, we'll recognize the Muddy Brook Fire Department. Next is the Pompret Fire Department. We'll move on to Atwood Hose Fire Company. Thank you. Next is the Webster Fire and Rescue. Next is KB Ambulance. Next is Putnam EMS Special Signal Fire Association. And next is Providence Canteen. On behalf of the Town of Killenly and the Town Council, I want to thank every one of you for your dedication to your communities and helping neighboring communities as well. You do such valuable work, and I know a lot of times it goes under, underappreciated or unappreciated. Uh, and we just are glad we can recognize you at this time. And now we are going to... Now we're gonna do a photo with everyone.
We'll go fast, I promise, alright, everybody? One, two, three. Keep going. Has everybody got pictures? Alright, does everybody, everybody good?
If you could just look here for one second. Just wanna make sure I got everyone's eyes.
We did not have any public comments submitted.
Thank you. If anyone would like to make public comment, um, now would be the time to step up to the podium and state your name and address.
John LaBelle, Fifty-Seven Island Road, Daveville, Connecticut. I had a list of items that I wanted to talk about, but I'm gonna forego those and I just say thank you to all the fire, the fire people who protect our community. And thank you for having the professionalism to recognize all their efforts. Thank you very much. I'll catch you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Last call for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is council and staff comments. Seeing none? Oh, Mr. Grandelsky.
Yeah, I wanna give my, my personal appreciation for everybody that worked at the fires, I mean, it, it's, they have to show up at a moment's notice, and they don't know what they're in for. Maybe they know where the building is, but the severity and everything else, and how many were there? I mean, it's, it's absolutely, it, it's great. And they, all, all that working together and, you know, the mill went down, but the rest of the adjoining property is all, it was secured, so I, I applaud them.
Thank you.
Um, I, I won't go, I, I have the same comments as Ed, and when I drove past, I was just amazed at how close the homes were to that mill and that none of them burned, except for what Mary said, some melting of the siding. They were just literally next to each other, they did an amazing job.
If I can, you know, I spent a lot of time for that fire event, um, with their crews. Many of those that responded to that scene stayed for the duration of the fire. They didn't leave, um, they were given opportunities for breaks and, and to be relieved, and several of them, many of them opted to stay to see it all the way through. It was an exhausting timeframe, um, but they were incredibly supportive to the community members and incredibly diligent and dedicated to saving all of their property and to have the least amount of public impact during that event. They worked together seamlessly. On the scene, you wouldn't necessarily, aside from patches on their shirts, you wouldn't necessarily identify them as being from separate departments, let alone separate communities and separate areas. They are true professionals in managing that, and, you know, um, it's just, you know, it's an honor to, to, to kind of help support them, but they just really should be recognized all the time for their true dedication and their professionalism in, uh, keeping our community and our community members safe.
Thank you.
Um, hav- having grown up in a firefighter's home, the reality, you know, Mary's comments that they, they were real professionals, these, these guys are volunteers. They donate their time to get trained. They have to go through classes in order to be able to, to go into burning buildings, you know? There's no more learning on the job. You have to pass firefighter one and firefighter two if you want to be able to, to, you know, be able to enter those buildings. They have to meet the same standards that a professional fire department has to, and they're volunteers. You know, they, they don't, you know, a lot of them will end up missing work, and if they don't get paid for, you know, calling in sick, you know, they didn't get paid. And yet, they, you know, they answer the call when, when the tones drop and the alarm goes off. They, they leave that nice warm bed and home and put everything on the line sometimes, so I really appreciate and I understand everything that they do and, and, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we were able to recognize them for that.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank everyone, um, for all their dedication, all the fire departments that were here. And I encourage anyone who's listening, um, at home to this, to recognize any firefighters you may know, whether it's fellow coworkers, neighbors, friends, um, and just recognize them and thank them for the work that they do for our community and your community.
I concur with everything everyone has said, and I also would like to say there's a shortage. So if you are able to volunteer in your communities, it's a wonderful thing to do. I mean, these guys step up, just like our police, ambulatory, you know, it's, it's needed and it's something that every community, you know, like, what would happen if we didn't have the volunteers, and there are shortages everywhere. You can drive around, you know, the whole state and there's volunteers needed, so if it's something you would consider, look into your town and see if you can help out.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll go, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to concur and, and say how very grateful I am for all of our first responders, especially...
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on on the agenda. Next item up is item eleven, or excuse me, item ten, appointments to boards and commissions. First up is Robert Lufquest, who is seeking appointment to the Conservation Commission. Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Gambitista, to appoint Mr. Robert Lufquest to the Conservation Commission. The term would run for five years from March first through February twenty-eighth, I don't have the years on that.
It's just below that, under his, uh, wording.
Oh, okay, alright. Read further down. Uh, March first, two thousand and twenty, through February twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-five. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, discussion?
Yeah, he's, he's already been attending conservation meetings and he's ready to go. He's been involved and, uh, I, I like that, the enthusiasm is there, so I appreciate him coming forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on. Next item up on the agenda is item ten B. Michael Montville is requesting to switch from a regular member to an alternate member. He does not need to be interviewed as his term will continue until February twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. His new term would run from November two thousand and twenty-two to October two thousand and twenty-five. This will leave one vacancy, one alternate vacancy, um, and allow, uh, Robert Lufquest to be interviewed as a regular member.
So currently, Mr. Montville is a regular member. He wants to switch to an alternate member. His current, um, his current regular member position, um, has him seated until February of twenty-twenty-five. You guys, uh, interviewed him less than a year ago, inseating him onto this position, and so as, um, our normal practice has been, if the council has interviewed that candidate within the last year, we don't require them to come back forward for a secondary interview, especially if they're just changing within the commission. So he's looking to just step down to an alternate position, and that really gave room for Mr. Lufquest to be appointed as a regular member. So as an alternate member, the alternate member vacancy is November of twenty-twenty-two through October of twenty-twenty-five, so it does go a little bit beyond what his regular member seated position is, but again, the council has authority to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Barclay. Any further discussion?
Well, he's, he's been active on conservation, but his situation has gotten to the point where he felt he couldn't make as many meetings, so he wanted to make the regular position available to someone else, and so he moved to the alternate, and so this, this works.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll move on on the agenda. Next item up is ten C. Amy Sterling is seeking appointment to the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. There are currently two alternate vacancies. The alternate, alternate term run from September first, two thousand and twenty-two through August thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. Can I get a motion to appoint Amy Sterling?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion? Seeing...
Remember her interview the other day, she seemed like, you know, she was, and, very eager, uh, so that's, that's what we want.
And she also had experience on other, in other towns, so...
I appreciate her coming forward and, uh, this is good.
Tickle Fairland Wetlands.
Yep. We had a problem with them, they were, they couldn't even make meetings before they were, you know, so now we, we've got it. So if a regular can't go on, we, we have, we have that filled, this is very positive.
No, she said she had served in two other towns, right?
Two separate towns on Inland Wetlands.
Yep, so, yeah. And like Ed said, she had a lot of good energy. It was rare when to go.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on. Next item up is item ten D. Andrew Dana is seeking reappointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority. As a regular member, his term would run from November first, two thousand and twenty-three to October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Mr. Dana attended five of nine meetings in two thousand and twenty-three and seven out of eight meetings in two thousand and twenty-two. WPCA currently has one regular member vacancy and two alternate member vacancies. Can I get a motion to reappoint Mr. Dana?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion?
Yeah, he's, uh, when he, is that the meetings? He is active, he, the whole board, most of the people get involved, uh, there's always something going on, and, uh, his background, he has a, a piping background and whatnot, so he has some, his outside interests fits well with this, and, uh, but I appreciate, you know, his continued service.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on on the agenda. Next item up is item ten E. Kevin Mahan is seeking reappointment to the Board of Rec. His term would run from January first, two thousand and twenty-four to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Mr. Mahan's attendance over the course of his appointment has been consistent with no absences. The Board of Rec currently has no vacancies. Can I get a motion to reappoint Mr. Mahan?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Mr. Grandelsky. Discussion?
Kevin, Kevin's just, um, really jumped right into it. Um, he was instrumental in, uh, beginning a bike rodeo to teach bicycle safety, um, and we're looking to do a second year of it this year. So, he's definitely, uh, an asset to the, to the Rec Commission, because that's a very active commission as well.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on on the agenda. Next item up is ten F. Fay Barrio is seeking reappointment to the Board of Rec. Her term would run from January first, two thousand and twenty-three to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Ms. Barrio's attendance over the course of her appointment has been consistent with only one absence in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, can I get a motion to reappoint Ms. Barrio?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion?
Fay, Fay is also very active with the Rec Department, um, very, had a lot to do with the, um, celebrating Killenly, over the years, when she was employed, and now that she's retired, I, that's definitely a loose term, because Fay, I think, is busier now than when she actually weren't, had a, had a paying job. But she's just very active in our community, and she's definitely an asset to the Rec Commission.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to item ten G. Michael Huco is seeking reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. His term would run from January first, two thousand and twenty-four to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. Mr. Huco's attendance over the course of his appointment has been consistent. He had no absences in two thousand and twenty-three and attended eleven out of thirteen meetings in two thousand and twenty-two. Planning and Zoning currently has two alternate member vacancies. Can I get an appointment to, uh, can I get a motion to reappoint Mr. Huco?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Gambitista. Uh, discussion?
It's interesting, as an alternate, he's been participating, moved up to a regular on many occasions in this past year, and they've all been
Important.
Unique, uh, planning and zoning meetings, so, uh, uh, yeah, it, it, he's good, it's...
I think Planning and Zoning is one of the hardest commissions, and I think he's done a, he's done a great job. And like Ed said, he's had to step in as a regular member on many, many occasions. I think he's done a good job.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to item ten H. David Smith is, uh, seeking reappointment to the Housing Authority. His term would run from January first, two thousand and twenty-four to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. This would be as a regular member. His attendance over the course of his appointment has been consistent with no absences since his appointment in two thousand and nineteen. The Housing Authority currently has one regular member vacancy. Can I get a motion to reappoint Mr. Smith?
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Mr. Grandelsky. Discussion?
David, David is the chair, and he does a good job, and he does have a good attendance, and I think the whole group works very well together.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dave's been good, and when he was here, uh, the last month or whenever recently, I mean, he was advocating for the housing, you know, it's like, and so people know that it's, they're on a shoestring budget over there, but they make things work and, you know, and with the elevator, with the money alloc, you know, allocated to the elevator, that, that's very appreciative of, of all of that.
Thank you. Um, I will say the couple meetings I've attended, um, as the alternate liaison, um, he did a phenomenal job running the meetings, and I was surprised with the amount of public involvement and participation and attendance at the meetings, especially compared to what we normally have at our meetings. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on. Next item on the agenda is 10I. Michael Moran is seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Housing Authority. His term would run from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2027. In 2023, Mr. Moran attended two out of 10 meetings, and 2022, Mr. Moran attended eight out of nine meetings. Current, the Housing Authority currently has one regular member vacancy. Can I get a motion to reappoint Mr. Moran?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Barclay, seconded by Mr. Gambatista. Discussion?
Despite his absences, I think it's important for somebody who lives in the Housing Authority to relay that information to the residents. And so previously, he, he did do a good job, and like I said, they all work very well together with Carol.
Thank you. If I remember correctly, the chairman, Mr. Smith, did endorse Mr. Moran's reappointment as well when he was here for his interview.
Yes, and he also recognized that his absences were due to medical reasons, and so it was not just due to lack of interest. It was for, for a reason, and he felt that ongoing, he would be able to participate.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on to item 10J. Lynn LaBerge is seeking reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Her term would run from February 1st, 2023 to January 31st, 2028. Her attendance over the course of her appointment has been consistent with no absences. The Zoning Board of Appeals currently has one regular member vacancy and three alternate member vacancies. Can I get a motion to reappoint Ms. LaBerge?
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gambatista. Motion is seconded by Mr. Grandowski. Discussion?
Twenty-three years old, so she's been my neighbor for 31 years. I think she's pretty diligent and involved at the time.
Thank you.
I, can I thank you? I will say Lynn is like Fay. She, she's fully engaged in her community, and she gives back so much. I mean, she'll probably never retire.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 11A. Reports from liaisons, a Board of Education liaison. I do not believe we have, so we'll move on to 11B. Borough Council Liaison.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Unfortunately, last meeting for the Borough Council, I was sick and didn't make it. I do know that we received a bid for the HVAC for the fire department for $173,000, and the board approved to move forward with it. So, but all I have this time, sorry.
Okay. No problem. Any questions, comments from council? Okay. Thank you for coming this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next item up on the agenda is item 12A. Discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to accept the summary report on general fund appropriations for town government?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion? Comments? Ms. George?
Oh, no, I was just.
I saw you hitting your microphone. Ms. Murphy, do you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 12B. Can I get a motion to accept the system object based on adjusted budget for the Board of Education?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion, questions?
Mary, do you know when we're gonna get a liaison? Have they settled that yet?
I honestly don't. I was just thinking about that. I don't know if we've actually received a report from the Board of Ed to, to know what their liaisons are yet, so I'll reach back out to the superintendent's office and see what their timing is on that. So I'm not, I'm not positive that they've gotten that all ironed out yet. Maybe they have.
I think they, last month.
I'll find, I'll find that out, and I'll report back.
Thank you.
I know, I know Rec and Economic Development are both looking for somebody to.
Yes, they are. So I'll reiterate and just see where they are with those liaison appointments.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 13A. Town Managers Report.
So the first one I wanted to report on was, we did get notification, I don't, many of you probably recall from back in February of 2023, I submitted a letter to Senator Mae Flexer with, looking for, requesting funding for a number of improvements at Owen Bell Park, and, you know, we really hadn't heard much from that going forward, but I know she was working on it. We did receive notification from Senator Flexer's office that the town is receiving the full funding request of $210,000. So we'll be, you know, moving forward with those. One was for the Joyce Ritchie Pavilion. The family had raised a good amount of money for that pavilion. The town is doing a lot of the installation, which helps reduce that overall cost, but the remaining portion of the materials, there was still a gap in funding for that. This will pay for that remaining funding. Also, with the dredging of the pond, that project has been with Army Corps Engineers for 18 months, waiting for review, approval, comment, hopefully just approval. So we keep pushing on them, but knowing that prices are changing over that time period, this will help cover any additional costs associated as pricing has changed with regards to that portion of the project. And then lastly, one of the areas, we actually included it in last year's capital improvement plan, is, you know, our splash pad is enormously utilized by the community and the surrounding region. We're one of the, we're the, right now, they're really the only community that has a splash pad in the northeast corner, and so it's really heavily utilized. And one of the observations that I've had and my staff has had is that, you know, our real little community members, our toddlers and our really littles, they really want to be in that water, but sometimes the water volume is just too much, and the water pressure is too much. So they may run in, or there's just so many bigger bodies that it's hard for them to really enjoy it. And so many times, we see those littles kind of stuck on the outskirts, and they end up playing, and they really create like holes on the side of the concrete pad, and they play in mud puddles at this point. And so, you know, we wanted, I really, I really think it would be a great addition to have a splash pad that's really geared towards our littles, right? So it's really a toddler geared splash pad. It's, you know, lower volume water pressure, all the features are much lower to the ground, lower volume of water, so it really can help engage those, you know, smaller community members that we have. And the proposed location is really right adjacent to the existing splash pad, so if you're a family that has multiple age ranges, it's not like, you know, one is all the way across the park and the other one, so you can really kind of, you know, be in one location and, you know, watch all your kiddos. So this, that project, we have really a large portion of that being, as far as the earthwork and the installation being done by our highway crews, well, that really reduces the cost. They were the ones that actually installed the existing splash pad that we have, so we only had to pay for equipment materials, and that's what we're looking to do with this one as well. The biggest challenge to this one is finding the, identifying a water source that we can use, a well source that we'll be able to use, that will generate the wa, the water pressure necessary, or the water volume necessary to support such a feature. So engineering, our town, our engineering department has done some preliminary views on that, and we'd done that prior to submitting for this grant request. So those are kind of the three major components. With the splash pad, there's, when you pull into Owen Bell, there's about three or four trees that are right there at the edge of the parking lot, between the parking lot and the playground. Many of those trees are really compromised, the roots are really exposed at this point, and that's just comes from, you know, years and years of people sitting underneath those trees and hanging out underneath the trees. It's, it's all fine, it's just it, it eroded away, and it's really exposed the roots, and it's, the trees are now, are, they're now damaged, right? So we would be looking to eliminate those trees, but instead of replanting new trees, we'll put in shade structures. We may look at putting in some smaller trees, tree or brush structures to still provide some green break between the parking lot and the playground space, but we need to be mindful of what type of vegetation we might put in there because of the sloping grade that's right there, and that potential consistent damage that happens from, you know, people just utilizing that space, right? So we want to be mindful of what vegetation we put in there, so that way we don't, you know, just plant something to have it get destroyed, just, just from foot traffic. That's just what can happen, so. But to allow for, you know, you know, one of the reasons why everybody migrates underneath there is because it's hot in the summertime, and those splash pad areas have no shade whatsoever. So this would help provide some of that shade to those areas as well, which would really help the, you know, the kids that are using it and, and adults. So that's really what we're looking at doing with that. And, you know, without that additional grant funding, we wouldn't be able to pursue this unless we, you know, identify another funding source, so very grateful for that. Storm response, as you all are well aware, December 18th, we had yet another large significant rain event that occurred, and it was rain and wind. Because of the close in time proximity to the previous rain event of five inches, we had a lot of, a lot more down trees, which resulted in just about 15, I think it was approximately 15 road closures overall throughout the town. Just for, you know, putting this in context, the state recorded at a river level, recorded a 25-year storm in that storm event, and within two hours, it increased to a 100-year storm event in the rivers. So it was a high volume of water, a lot of it was just washing out. We were very mindful of flooding impacts. We had about 30% of the town without power. I will, you know, commend our emergency management team. They did a really great job with communicating to Eversource and all of our road closures, communicating where those closures are and expected timelines around getting them reopened. And also, our highway crews responded to all of those, so we were able to release our fire departments, our volunteers, to get them back into emergency service response as opposed to kind of being wire guards. So they worked really closely with that. And really, because of the communication that our emergencies, emergency management director, Randy Bertrand, had with Eversource through the duration of Tuesday, which is the one day post, right after the storm, because of that level of communication, 97% of the town was restored, had power restoration by the end of Tuesday, which, you know, was actually really good. We've seen far longer delays, and to be honest, Tuesday morning, we were expecting a much longer delay, and it was a really good communication with Eversource and being very specific around where our priority areas were. We did have some localized damages, especially around wastewater treatment plant pump stations. We had some localized damage around that. We're working through those challenges right now, and we have developed an ongoing emergency plan to be able to deal with any of those pump failures and power failures to those pump stations going forward in the future in an emergency response. But overall, you know, I think the total group worked very well together. Box culvert replacements. So Valley Road is open. The culvert that spans over the Mashin Tuck Brook has been fully replaced. You can see a really pretty picture of it, of the replaced culvert. They did a great job. Northern Construction has moved on now to the box culvert on Bear Hill Road. So that, Bear Hill Road got closed on January 2nd. I included the detour map. It is a, a long detour. There's no way around having a long detour out there. This has been communicated to all the emergency services, as well as the Board of Education, so clearly everybody's made their paths around. We anticipate that this closure will be for approximately three months, and after they complete that one, they'll move on to the third box culvert that was part of this overall approval, and that would be the second box culvert on Valley Road that goes over the Whetstone Brook. So that'll be the third culvert that gets completed. They recognize the length of detour on this one, so, you know, if they can get it open quicker than three months, that's gonna be the target, right? So we're trying to diligently work through that. Lastly, I just wanted to give you the update. The gentleman from the Housing Authority indicated the Birchwood Terrace Grant application, so the Housing Authority's executive director was notified that there was some funding potential availability for the Birchwood Terrace renovation in the 25-26 funding cycle, so this is over a year out, the application. And so the funds are for pre-development costs and environmental testing and project design. We had, we have submitted for Birchwood Terrace in the past, in 2019 and 2020, without success. The state had granted all the small gritty, small cities grant funding for housing-type projects, all to the other side of the state. They went to larger communities. So we're hopeful that maybe this round, we'll start to see some that are gonna come back to the smaller communities. And this would, the scope of this project would be new windows, siding, doors, bathroom remodel, including replacing bathtubs with a handicap shower for that, new kitchens, split units, so heating and cooling units, new flooring and painting for all of that. The estimated cost, this is for about 40 units, the estimated cost is about $5 million for this project. And generally, the grant usually does the, the funding for the construction, the Housing Authority usually has some small, smaller costs on their side, and it's usually around pre-designed development. So it's not necessarily, there's not necessarily a town cost or a town share to this. So Mary Brom, our community development director, is the one that files for these grants, assists the Housing Authority, assists Carol Green in filling out the application process and submitting it, and then ultimately, we oversee the expenditure of the funds. That's really what our involvement is. We handle all of the grant, the grant revenue coming in and any expenditure associated, and we make sure there's compliance with the Small Cities Grant Program. So that's what our contribution largely is. Does anybody have any questions, concerns?
It was brought up, it was brought up at last night's meeting, the Inland Wetlands, that they had some issues with the pump stations failing and, and backing up into people's houses.
Yeah, that's what I had mentioned with.
But that could be.
So it wasn't.
Their pump too, as well, right?
Well, it was, it was a power, it was power failure.
Right.
So there was a number of, you know, a lot, there was a lot of power failure during that storm timeframe. Four, four pump stations along South Shore. That section, that South Shore section of Lake, of Alexandra's Lake, lost power. The, initially, staff wasn't able to gain access because there were trees down with wires, you can't get in. So these pump stations, many people think of pump stations as a standing building that is fenced in and all of that. That's not what these pump stations are. They're, actually, you would probably drive right by them. You wouldn't even know that they're pump stations. They look more like a manhole cover that's partially sticking out of the ground. That's really all it is. There's not necessarily space or containment space to have a steady backup generator attached to that. These are pumps that are in the ground. These are pumps that are in the ground, um, and there's no standing structure over that. We do have a generator at the plant. Um, they were delayed in being able to get out there, largely due the, with regards to the, um, downed tree, but also, once that was cleared and they were able to gain access, um, they were trying to, those pump stations are tied together. So there's four pump stations, and in order to get the, uh, flow out of Pump Station Four, you have to first empty one, and then two goes to one, three goes to two, four goes to three, and you keep that, like, leapfrogging, uh, process going. The volume of water increased dramatically, um, to those, and so, um, they were unable to keep up with that. Um, and they only had one generator at the time because they had so many other pump stations out. What the other generator that they had was already stationed, the portable generator they had was already stationed. So I am working with our insurance company. Um, it's very rare that I am advocating that the town has liability. Generally, I'm on the other side of the fence, advocating that the town does not have liability. But in this case, I really feel that the town does have liability. Um, and so I'm advocating to our insurance carrier to provide coverage, um, for these losses. And we've been in regular communication with the property owners. We did in, immediately activate Servpro, um, and we've been communicating with Servpro. So we've, to date, um, we've covered the initial, um, cleanup cost associated with each of the properties. Um, and now we're getting ready to go into, uh, restoration phase, and that's where we're really trying to, you know, push hard on our insurance company. So I have had pretty regular conversations with our insurance company. I'll be, again, having another meeting with them later on this week. They did send out their adjusters to, uh, look at all of the properties. So, you know, um, and going forward, um, we've put in place that we have a backup. We have a, we have a contractor that has, um, four units that can be immediately rolled out on an emergency basis. So we would, you know, once we get notification from our systems that the power has failed, they will immediately notify myself and Randy Berchard as our Emergency Management Director, so that way we can also be, um, having direct communication with Eversource and notifying them that there is a priority facility that is without power. But also, they will then be reaching out and having four, those four generators brought out, so that way we can maintain all four pump stations at the same time. So, you know, that's, there, you know, I think there are things that the town could have done differently on this, but, um, you know, we learn from that and we, and we set up a new practice and policy moving forward to hopefully prevent it from happening in the future.
What do you figure the, the liability is going to be, any total amount?
So I don't have full total amounts as of, as of right now. We don't have restoration dollars yet. Um, I only have cleanup right now. Cleanup is, uh, total, cleanup is looking close to, um, ninety thousand. Seven.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
There were three that were, uh, had a higher impact. They received the most damage, and the others had, um, uh, much less, um, impacts.
Is it not cost-effective to buy four generators?
Um, we could, however, we don't have, so, we don't necessarily have the manpower to go out and get them all set up and hooked up. Number two, um, we also, you can't just hook up generators and leave them out there as we would normally. All of our other pump stations have backup generation directly tied to them. So when they go out, they automat, the generation automatically kicks over. These aren't that same type of pump station where you could put, the generator would be the only thing sticking above ground, and there's no fence around it, there's no protection for it. You're also would have to store, you know, there's no fuel storage component there, and it being so close to the lake, most of our other, um, pump stations have at least, you know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty gallon to two hundred gallon, um, storage tank. You wouldn't want to put, you know, five to seven hundred gallons of fuel stored right there, um, on the side of the lake, right that. So, um, given the, um, the infrequency of needing this, um, we felt that it was probably most advantageous to activate that. There's no cost for us to maintain that relationship of having that emergency on-call, and we only pay the cost when they're deployed. So, um, I, I think that makes the most sense. And we're not having to maintain those generators continually.
Any other comments? Um, I just had one thing. You had mentioned mud puddles at Owen Bell around the splash pad area. Now, what is the cause of those mud puddles? Will, when we put this other pad, are we going to have?
It's kids digging.
Okay.
That's what's causing it. Kids are digging, and so they're playing in it. That's, that's really what it is.
Okay.
So part of this is also putting in a border around both splash pads that will allow for better drainage off the sides of the concrete pad into, uh, the drainage system. So, you know, it would be sort of like a turf-type, um, installation, but it would allow for that direct drainage underneath, and that would help alleviate that pooling that would, that is naturally occurring as the water's running off or as kids are, are, you know, collecting it in buckets and throwing it off, right? Like, that's what happens. But largely what, that's largely what it is, and the holes get worse because little ones go in there and they start digging, you know? I have a four-and-a-half-year-old, she loves to dig in mud. That's what she does. And so, you know, and that's where they, they can still play in water, but not be uncomfortable in the bigger, uh, features. So, um, that's really what we're trying to do, and it would help, um, putting that additional drainage feature around. It will help to alleviate that and not have that continue to happen.
Ms. Grandowski.
I wish, I wish. So Dave has been, um, I think we're going to sick Alec on him next. We're, it's, it's just continually, and, you know, yes, the squeak sometimes gets the, um, oil, and sometimes it gets put to the bottom of the pile, right? It's a very delicate balance. So, um, we are trying to see, you know, what avenues we might be able to go down to kind of try and push, push this conversation along, but, um, we're hopeful, we've been sitting in the stack for long enough, most of them through Army Corps, like the culverts, that took two years through Army Corps before they responded to the three-box culverts. That was one of our big holdups on that project, was Army Corps engineers sat on the, uh, designs for review for two years. So, um, we're eighteen months in. We're close.
So, right now, it doesn't look like it would happen this summer.
It's, it's possible. It's possible. Where, that's what we're trying to push right now and say, look, if we, we need this back by, you know, really March timeline to really kick it off. So we're trying to do a heavier push on, uh, just, you know, reminding them, hey, we're looking for this. Do you have any comments? Um, do you need us, you know, do you need any additional information from us? That's what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Mr. Wayen.
Uh, again, last night's meeting, there was a couple of questions about reevaluation, and people have called the number and have had no response.
Okay, so, um, you know, we did put out for people, if they wanted an in-person, for them to call the assessor's office and schedule that, um, in-person, that actually was this, uh, was last week. Um, if they still haven't had a response, have them call the assessor's office. Um, talk to the assessor's office, um, and the assessor's office can get ahold of the contractor. So that's what I would recommend that they do.
Were they supposed to get a, after they inquired with the, the contractor, were they supposed to get a letter of, affirm?
Yeah, the contractor-
That's what they're saying, that they're not receiving that letter.
That's what they haven't gotten. Okay, so I don't know that the contractor has sent those out yet. So I will circle back with them and verify where they are with timing of sending those out. But I think that they were waiting until after this last week, and then they would start generating those. So they may not see, start seeing them until next week, but I will verify with the contractor. Okay, thank you.
Uh, my understanding was, uh, when I had spoken with them last week, was it was going to be about three weeks when the letters would be received. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is fourteen. Uh, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to item fifteen, new business. Uh, discussion on setting the meeting calendar for the budget process.
So I don't have consideration and action on this one because, um, this is really looking for guidance. So this is an unusual year for the budget process. Typically, for the budget process, so by charter, the town, uh, council is to receive the budget, be presented the budget by April first. And historically, the town, the town and the Board of Ed has done a presentation to the town council for the budgets on the Saturday closest to April first. That's historically what's happened. This year, that's March thirtieth, but that's Easter weekend. So, um, I don't know everybody's availability on Easter weekend, but we typically, so I, I looked back to see, you know, what was done in the past, and so, and I also, you know, kind of brainstormed some, uh, possibilities. So there's really three options in front of you, and I'm just going to kind of focus on that. One, uh, week in April. So for timing-wise, the other benchmark on here that I'm cognizant of is typically the town holds their public hearing on the second Thursday. The town council holds their public hearing on the budget on the second Thursday of April. And by charter, it's required to be held before April fifteenth. So that would be April eleventh this year. Um, so trying to kind of gauge where that is. Now, what goes to public hearing is the town manager's budget and the Board of Education's budget. The town council doesn't take action on and deliberate, uh, and make changes to the budget until after that public hearing. You're receiving public comment on what has been presented to you, so you know how, what actions you should be taking. So, um, the first scenario, option one, um, has a, uh, joint meeting with the Board of Education. Has the, has the Saturday, Saturday meeting pushed one week and pushed onto April sixth? And we would hold the joint meeting with the Board of Ed first from eight to ten, and then do a much longer. Usually, we only do a half a day on Saturday, but a longer day from ten to four with lunch being provided, and we would break for lunch, um, with myself presenting to the town council the town budget. Um, and then we would also have an overflow day for Monday, um, April eighth, for bu- budget considerations. However, I, my concern on that was in hearing from, through my, uh, evaluation, that some, some members of the council wanted some more time to really, uh, digest and, you know, really get their arms wrapped around each of the budget sections. So I didn't know, trying to blow through it all on a, on a one-day thing was really going to, you know, be the best option. And so, and I also did reach out to the superintendent who spoke to the Board of Ed. Um, they actually would prefer to meet with the town council on that Tuesday, April second, um, as opposed to doing it on Saturday morning. So the next two options don't have a Saturday option, or the next two options, uh, are, have it split. So the sec, option number two has the town side, my presentation starting on April first. The very next day, April second, it would be the special town council meeting, but instead of allowing interviews, it would just be your joint meeting with the Board of Education for the Board of Education to present their budget. And you would continue with that. And then we would continue with the town side presentation on April third and fourth as needed, flowing all the way to April eighth as needed for budget presentation. The last option, option three, has the Board of Ed giving their presentation to you on April second. And then the town budget, I would present it to you for an extended time period on Saturday the sixth, and then having, uh, a flowover for Monday, um, April eighth. So I kind of wanted to give you the three scenarios. The last time this scenario fell on, um, was I think like twenty thirteen or so? And, uh, option two was how they scheduled it. Um, they had it where it was, the town started presentation on Monday, and they just, uh, the Board of Ed did their presentation on Tuesday, and then we continued on. So really looking for guidance from all of you as to how you want me to structure those meetings.
I like option two.
You like option two?
I like three.
Michelle?
I'm still looking at it, honestly. Are we able to get, um, the BOE budget before Thursday, the twenty-eighth, just to look at it? Because, um, that doesn't really give us very much time either way to look at both of the budgets.
Sure, so the Board of Education budget by charter has to be to us by March fifteenth, so I can have that budget distributed to you. I, I have, I can't complete the town's budget book until after receiving the Board of Education's budget. I then have to layer all of their information in, which then calculates the mill rate and all of that other stuff. So the bu, the town-side budget book with the mill rate impact won't be able to really get to you until that March twenty-eighth timeframe, but I can get you your copies of the Board of Education's budget once they get them over to me.
Okay. Okay, yeah. I, I like option three, too. I think, I mean, it's a lot of information to digest at once. It's, it's probably the most important thing we do, and I think having time to look at each one separately is really important. So I think that gap between the second and the sixth is, is good for us to, you know, take it home, look at it, discuss it. I, I like option three.
Um, I will weigh in. Um, I like option three for the fact of the timeframe it gives us from when we receive the town budget, um, which would be the twenty-eighth, rather than only receiving it on the twenty-eighth, and then on the option two would be that Monday, then we're going over it on Monday. Um, it gives us some more time before the following Saturday being the sixth, to go over the town budget and look at it before it's presented, uh, to the council. So that way, it gives us more time to, if we have questions during the presentation, to bring them up.
In addition, over a holiday weekend.
Yeah. Yeah, because that is the thing to consider. We would be getting the budget on Thursday. That Sunday is Easter, so it would limit a lot of people's time, um, especially if you're having, traveling during the weekend. Um, it'll give you, give us a little more time to digest it and look at it before, um, the presentation. Would three work for?
I'll go with three.
Or I'll go with, um- Whichever is more flexible.
I'm floating off the island. I only like it because it's weekends are tough for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Understandable.
It is what it is.
I mean, be honest with you, looking at my schedule, the six, I'm actually, that's my weekend off, so. But I'm actually not working the first or the second either at night, so.
Do you go every, every other?
Every other, yeah.
You working this weekend?
I worked last week, this past weekend.
So you have this weekend off?
I actually have this one off.
I, the only reason I ask is because Nancy will have that, that weekend off as well, so. So that's okay, so that works.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, she's on the same work weekends as me, then, yeah, she'll have the six, so.
So if what I'm hearing is option three, so I'll produce the budget calendar, what, basically, what you're seeing here for option three. At your next meeting in February is typically when you vote, when you do the formal vote on setting the actual public hearing and the, um, annual town meeting, which is really set by charter, and then also the referendum date, so that'll all come to you in your February. Um, we are in the process of, uh, doing the facility requests for those with the Board of Education, so we should, um, hopefully have that ironed out before you guys meet next week, next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on. And next item up is item sixteen, council members and reports, uh, council member reports and comments. Uh, Ms. Grandowski, would you start?
Uh, the consternation division, they're looking at the environmental award, discussing that. Uh, they're talking about, uh, again, the bus cores keep coming up. They're always positive, they're looking at bus cores, and possibly creating another bus core, because they have created one, they have another, but they're always full, they always stay with the sponsors. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Mr. Gamteese, did you have any? Okay, thank you. Mr. Wayen.
I attended the, um, Inland, Inland Wetlands, uh, meeting the other night, which was a great bunch of people. Uh, they, they definitely, uh, they had their stuff together. It was, it was, it was extremely interesting, as well as the town guys. They, Jonathan and, I want to say Alec. They, Jonathan and, I wanna say Alec.
Alec, uh, you're, uh, from engineering?
Yes.
Yeah, Alec.
Yeah, two good guys. They, they were like boom, 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 answers right away. It was, it was all the, um, all of the permits that night were, I, I had notes, but I wasn't going running back to the car and going rant, so sorry. Um, the town, the town's, uh, application went through, uh, for the trail, for the trail extension and the various other permits went through as well. And there was one forestry, um, I don't know if they were actually putting in a permit, but they were asking for the okay because they were within two hundred feet of the, the river in there, they were gonna do some, some, uh, selective cutting out there, so. But that's very interesting, extremely interesting.
Is the trail extension towards Plainfield or?
It's, it's towards Plainfield, so it's our phase five. Um, we've had the, we've been awarded the grant funding for it, um, for whatever reason, uh, this was, this predated my management time here. Um, but, uh, we were awarded the construction phase, but, um, hadn't gotten grant funding yet for the design portion of it. So they're completing the design portion and hopefully will be going out to bid probably within the next month or so for construction of the phase five, which will get us, um, just about behind where the, uh, Jolly Gravel operation is. Um, phase six is part of an award with Plainfield in conjunction with Plainfield and that one is a bit more challenging because of the deep wildlife division, but.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, uh, no, it doesn't get us all, uh, yeah, actually, it does get us a little bit past Jolly's, right? But it doesn't get us to the next river crossing. It gets us, it actually gets us right before his spillway. That's where we end because phase six starts there, 'cause that includes the bridge. Yeah.
Anything further? Ms. Murphy.
Jason, can you come back to me? I'm just gonna run out to my car. I've got the agenda in front of me, the meeting I attended and I'd rather look at my notes.
Okay, no problem. Ms. Wayhead.
Uh, rec has not met yet. They will be meeting, um, the twenty second of this month. Mary, Jill and I, um, kinda went to the Onmed ribbon cutting on Friday. They, most, most unusual ribbon cutting I've ever been to. Um, they kinda treated us like rock stars, like, oh, we have representatives from the town and, so, um, they even had me cut the ribbon for them, so. Um, I was not, I was just gonna be in the end of the, edge of the picture, but no, I was smack dab in the front, so. Um, but it, it was nice. It's, it's a great opportunity, um, uh, almost like a Minute Clinic kind of a thing. It's high-tech, virtual. I mean, everybody's really familiar with telehealth visits and this is basically what it is, um, privacy. Um, they, my, my, what, my, my thought was, geez, how do they disinfect everything in between and they actually have UV lights that actually disinfect everything and?
Yeah, they have actual diagnostic tools. So it's, instead of just being like a normal telehealth visit that you have in your house, um, they actually have a stethoscope and a camera that come out of the ceiling. Uh, they have a weight scale right there in the room. They can do your pulse ox. All of that can be done right there in the room. When you go into the room, the, the door, uh, when you come up to the door, it looks like it's a see-through glass door. When you close the door and engage in the visit with the, um, with the onboarding person, um, the wind, the door locks so somebody can't walk in on you and it frosts over automatically, um, so people can't see that you're in there. Um, and they have a, you know, HD camera, so, you know, like they can see down your throat, they can, you know, see, uh, rashes and things like that. Um, and, uh, they can do, they can listen to your lungs, they can do all of those things right there, um, in that, and they have a great availability of hours.
Yeah, Sunday hours, one to se, one to seven on a Sunday. You know, how many times has your kid decided to get a sore throat and you need to have them checked? And they can call in whatever scripts you need.
Right. So they have a initial onboarding person, just like you would have at your doctor's office, that takes all the vitals and then they transfer you over to, um, a physician's assistant. Um, and the physician's assistant comes on to the screen and, you know, you have an entire, they have the blood pressure cuff and everything right there. So it's, it's actually really great. They have, you know, seven-day-a-week services.
During the week, it's till nine thirty at night. So how many times have you had parents come home and the kid's not feeling good and you can't get to the doctors?
Or you, you have, you as yourself can't take additional time off from work and you just, you need to be seen, but your doctor, or you need to be seen, but your doctor doesn't have an opening for a week and you don't wanna wait for a week, you know? They can manage that and they don't, the, they can call in prescriptions to any pharmacy, not just Stop and Shop, it's any pharmacy. So whatever pharmacy you use, they will, they will send it to. It's a great altern, it's a great option.
Thank you. With the new liaisons, uh, appointments, I did not have any meetings yet. Ms. George.
Uh, no meetings yet. I have Department of Public Health on Thursday and we're shooting to keep that per capita as low as possible. So I will, instead of wait until next month, I'll send you guys all an update when I find out.
Um, for December, the Housing Authority and the Planning and Zoning meetings were both canceled.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy.
Yeah, I couldn't find the notes. I don't know if, uh, Ed remembers much, but it's the same things that are always on the agenda. We talked a little bit about the flood and the property damage. Um, I don't think they had violations. I can't remember, honestly. Um, they had the, well, that would be the SSO. Um, talked about Reynolds Street and where they are with that, that they're just, they put in a bunch of box, cup, box culverts there, but they're buttoning it up for the winter time and then they're gonna resume, uh, in spring. Uh, we went over the IONI study last meeting with you guys. Laurel Point Pump Station, I do not remember. Do you remember anything, Ed?
Well, the Laurel Point, the, the Laurel Point Pump Station was gonna be upgraded with the NTE project. So now with NTE, um, they were sorta assuming that NTE was not applicable and they were gonna start looking at what needs to be done to that, that we're gonna have to bear the cost of that. So that's in the developing stages.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I just don't, don't remember all of it. So that's all I get. I think HBIC, uh, they're just gonna land the units and, and wait. That was my understanding until spring. Does that sound right, Ed?
It sounds.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, all right. Sorry about that, Ed.
No problem. Um, was there any mention of the letter from DEP, um, in regards to, uh, I believe it was compliance from an issue dating back, I believe it was twenty seventeen?
I don't recall that. I think, I wouldn't remember that. What is it?
Uh, it was, they had issues, they were in violation back in twenty seventeen and, um, DEP basically came out with a letter saying that, um, you're in compliance and, and we're no longer watching, I believe the, the gist of it was?
They basically just closed it out.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, I don't, I don't remember them saying that.
Okay. And the one other thing I would like to add, um, I did get a, uh, letter from Cable Advisory and we do have two openings, um, on Cable Advisory. And that is open to anyone, citizens, council members. Um, the only things that were mentioned, and as I was reading through who's eligible, um, there was mention of, I believe if you're employees of nonprofits, there are some restrictions on that.
But you are just, are you a voting, I don't know too much about the complete specifics of?
Yeah, you end up being a voting member on the Cable Advisory.
And their meetings, I believe, are in Waterford.
I was just gonna ask that. They're not around there.
Either Waterford or Montville. One of the two.
Which would be, I, I'd be a good candidate for that since I work down that way. I will definitely keep that in mind as something I was considering looking into. I just gotta see time in the meetings. Any further comments?
Well, maybe a question on that cable. Now, there's multiple, we used to only have, um, Breeze Line, but Xfinity, who, what is, see, the, the cable companies are not regulated anymore. So what are we looking at? I mean, is it just a Breeze Line oversight or is it an Xfinity oversight or what?
I believe it's only Breeze Line, um, 'cause the email that I got was from Pure, or the letter I got was from Pure. Um, because Pure does still oversee the cable companies.
So it's just Breeze Line for Cable Advisory?
'Cause I called Pure one time and they said, we haven't done anything with them for a number of years. So. Oh, anything on Pure, like we were talking about Pure over time, is there anything, having a Pure, uh, the Pure presentation that we had was, no one knew about it.
I know, they didn't tell anybody.
It would be nice to.
Yeah, I'll keep asking.
I don't know.
See if we can get something for maybe the springtime or even the early summer.
Or any, any, if they do have something, I, I definitely would like to go, but.
Absolutely.
I gotta know about it.
Agreed, we all need to know about it.
Did they go through with that big increase?
For, um.
The last one they talked about, I forgot.
Connecticut, I think it was Connecticut Water. Um, I believe they just held their public hearings, they haven't made determination yet. They finished there, they completed the public hearing phase of it.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item seventeen A, executive session, evaluation of possible claims. Um, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session with the town council and the town manager.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made in second. Discussion. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We are going into executive session and it is currently eight twenty-two PM.
Elizabeth, if you wanna disconnect and then I will send.